Good evening. Welcome to all of you here tonight and those at home watching us by way of technology. Let's come to order and we take the roll. Thank you. We'll now have invocation by Commissioner Ward. Please stand for invocation, please.
Please guide us tonight, dear Lord, as we make decisions that will affect so many people in this beautiful county of ours of Pitt. Guide us in all that we say and all that we do. I'm in.
Thank you. We would now invite our guest to the podium from Pitt Community College. Please introduce yourself.
Hi there.
My close one?
Okay. My name is Jocelyn Russell. I'm currently a super senior at the Pitt County Schools Early College High School, and I'm the current student body president of our Student Government Association. A little bit about me, I will be heading to Western Carolina this fall to pursue my master's in public administration. I'm really excited about that. And thank you for having me this evening at this time. Please stand and join me with for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Madam Chair, we can move to excuse Tom Coulson.
Second.
Vote, please. Thank you. We will now have a motion. Ms. Ward?
Yes. We have to approve the agenda.
Approve the agenda. My eyes didn't get right. Okay. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Benjamin Holloman, second by Chris Nunnam. Vote, please. Unanimous. Thank you. Now we will have the motion.
Yes. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to appoint Matt Gibson as the interim county attorney with a grade 88, step 1, effective May the 1st, 2023.
Second. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Benjamin Holloman, second. Vote, please. Unanimous. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Madam?
Manager? You have one person signed up for public addresses to the board, Melissa Powell. If the interim county attorney would read the statement.
Yes, ma'am.
Please come forward, Ms. Powell, while he's reading.
Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each person will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking. Thank you.
Quotum's yours.
Good afternoon. I'm Melissa Powell. I live at 2772 Joe Stock's Road in Greenville, right off of Highway 43. North Carolina has a rich agriculture heritage, and a visit to the Pitt County American Legion Fair is a great way to experience that heritage right here in Pitt County. For more than 100 years, the Pitt County American Legion Agriculture Fair has provided foul fun and entertainment for all ages. You can enjoy a modern midway with lots of thrilling rides, exciting games, live performances, animal and agricultural competitions, and a wide variety of fair fun and more. My family, along with myself, have been volunteers in a lot of different areas. I am a full-time CPA working for Nutrien, but I have 10 years of volunteer experience with the Pitt County 4-H Club, 15 years of volunteer service with Eastern Pines Rescue, and over 35 years of participation in volunteer work with the Pitt County Fair. My purpose today is to represent the volunteers at the Pitt County Fair and ask that you give us some help, a request that you help us in providing a safe fair for Pitt County this year and the years to come. There are only 21 counties left in North Carolina that provide county fairs now, and we need to continue. Along with inflation and the high cost of about everything we do, it's getting harder and harder to fund the fair. And one of the specific areas I wanted to address was security. We last year went out and hired a security firm. We later had to do volunteer work for that. We would like to ask today the volunteers at Pitt County Fair to support us in helping fund the Sheriff's Department to provide coverage at our fair this year. We were proposed $42.50 an hour for that coverage, having 10 officers on some given nights and 18 officers on others. That far exceeds our budget and our ability to pay for that security coverage, but we need it. We need a collaboration between the Sheriff's Department, Pitt County Fair, and all of our Pitt County citizens to help us have a safe fair this year. Additionally, I'd like to add that the fair gives money back to the Pitt County Community College, to ECU scholarships. We are fair with other surrounding areas supporting us, like Edgecombe County, Martin County, Nash County. They all come here for the fair. It's fun. My whole family does it. I'm actually speaking on behalf of my daughter as well, who's 18. She's sitting in Jordan Library tonight, studying for her chemistry test tomorrow morning, but wanted to be here to also ask that you help support us and make a safe fair this year and the years to come, so it's affordable and we can continue to provide that service. Thank you.
Thank you for your expression. We will now have award ceremony, ma'am.
So we can go down front, Madam Chairwoman, but before you go, if the board will vote to approve items for presentation 1, 2, and 3.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner McLahorn. Let's vote, please.
The first recognition we have this morning, this evening, is for Kevin Swinson as our Employee of the Month. If Kevin would come forward. Right up here, we'll have you stand on the spot. Thank you. I enjoy each month having the opportunity to recognize our outstanding employees, and this, for the month of April, we're recognizing Kevin Swinson as our Employee of the Month. He was nominated by a peer, and in that nomination, it read, "On many occasions, Officer Swinson has demonstrated high professionalism while interacting with staff and the public. He always remains calm during stressful or hostile situations and strongly promotes a positive and safe work environment. Officer Swinson also encourages his colleagues to attend trainings to advance their own careers." Officer Swinson has been with Pitt County Government since 2021 as an armed intermediate detention officer with over 10 years' experience in the detention and prison field. So for your outstanding service, I am thrilled to present you with a certificate that reads... Certificate of Recognition for Employee of the Month, April 2023, presented to Kevin Swinson, Pitt County Detention Center, in recognition of your dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County Government and the citizens we serve, along with a $100 check as a token of our appreciation.
You got a smile out of you, didn't you?
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. You want to say something?
And then if you'll just stay for a picture. Terrific. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. All right. Next, we have a resolution of appreciation honoring Cam Coburn.
I gotta come back.
There he is. Yes. If you all come forward and step on the...
Howdy, good to see you.
So Cam Coburn is our Director of Pitt Area Transit System, who has just retired, and we are honoring him with a resolution as a department head this evening. And that resolution reads, "Resolution honoring Charles Cam Coburn for his years of service with Pitt County Government." It starts, "Whereas Cam Coburn was hired May 24, 1994, in the position of detention officer with the Pitt County Sheriff's Office. And whereas Cam Coburn was promoted to a transport officer in November 1997 and served as second-in-command from 1998 to September 2000. And whereas Cam Coburn was promoted to a deputy in October 2000 and served as a patrol officer, school resource officer, dare officer, and supervised the Community Impact Division as a sergeant until February 2016. And whereas Cam Coburn was named Pitt Area Transit Director of Transportation in February 2016. And whereas through his devotion to the citizens of Pitt County, Cam Coburn improved efficiency with implementation of GPS software, compliance with federal and state requirements, which increased the trip volume by 30% and increased the financial stability within Pitt Area Transit System. And whereas Cam Coburn completed and received many certifications and degrees, such as a National Sheriff's Office Association Scholarship recipient in 2009, Law Enforcement Executive Program from NC State University in 2015, Northwestern University School of Police Command in 2015, West Point Leadership Program in 2015, UNC Chapel Hill School of Government Municipal and County Administration in 2017, the Gilling School of Global Health Disaster Management Program in 2019, and Transportation Leadership Development Program at NC State's Institute of Transportation Research and Education in 2019. And whereas Cam Coburn served on various boards, such as the North Carolina Association of School Resource Officer Board of Directors, the Pitt Greenville Crime Stoppers Board of Directors, and the Pitt Community College Alumni Association Board of Directors. And whereas Cam Coburn was recognized by North Carolina State Emergency Management as an executive emergency manager in November 2019. And whereas he was honored in April 2023 with the North Carolina Public Transportation Association Milestone Award for his exceptional service to the association. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby express its gratitude and thanks to Charles Cam Coburn for his career of dedicated and exemplary service to the people of Pitt County, and honors him today with this resolution of appreciation, given under their hand and seal of Pitt County, adopted this the first day of May 2023, signed by Chairwoman Mary Perkins-Williams and attested by Kimberly Hines, Clerk to the Board."
Congratulations. You will be missed, and you cannot fill all those seats.
Get a picture. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. Enjoyed it, and wish all of you well.
Very good. Best of luck to you. Thanks so much. We've got another one. Mary, stay put. Two more, actually.
Oh, wow.
If Kelly Andrews would come forward.
Oh.
Our Director of Economic Development. Thank you, Kelly. Today, I also have the pleasure of presenting Kelly Andrews with a proclamation recognizing Economic Development Week, which is May 8th to the 12th, 2023. And that proclamation reads, "Whereas economic development is a process that is strengthened by the partnerships between economic developers and local government leadership to promote a shared vision for enhanced prosperity, thriving businesses, and vibrant communities. And whereas economic development efforts promote economic well-being and quality of life in Pitt County. And whereas economic developers, in partnership with industries, educators, local and state government, and other partners, work to enhance Pitt County's business climate, the economic stability and mobility of our citizens, and our competitive advantage for new industries, developers, and investors. Whereas local economic development efforts facilitate the creation, retention, and expansion of jobs and investments that sustain and grow our tax base, and enable Pitt County to provide consistent and quality services for our citizens and businesses. And whereas economic developers work in Pitt County and throughout the state of North Carolina, and furthermore, we recognize that we are all stakeholders in economic development." Now therefore, Pitt County Board of Commissioners recognize the importance of the efforts of economic developers, our role as county government, and the contributions of these efforts toward more prosperous communities, citizens, and businesses by proclaiming May 8th through May 12th, 2023 as Economic Development Week, adopted this first day of May 2023, signed by Chairwoman Mary Perkins-Williams and attested by Kimberly Hines, Clerk to the Board."
Thank you for your ladyship.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Okay. We have one more, and this is for a proclamation recognizing Resilient and Thriving Communities Week, and we have a group of folks who may be here. If you'll all come forward.
Oh, wow.
And these members present tonight represent a group called BRACE. And some of you may be here. I may have others on my list who are not here. Yes. But we have Jennifer Matthews with East Carolina University, and so I don't call those who didn't come. If we can just have you introduce yourselves, that would be wonderful.
Bonnie Jean Kuris, Teddy Bear Children's Advocacy Center.
Excellent.
I am Ruth Autumn Baker, and I was the BRACE intern this semester.
I'm Kia Glosson from Teddy Bear Children's Advocacy Center.
Oh, yeah.
Dr. Dina Alderjani, Assistant Professor at East Carolina University Interior Design.
Excellent. Thank you. And all of these folks represent BRACE, which stands for?
Building Resilience and Encourage to Excel. I always forget it.
Excellent. So we are pleased this evening to present this group with a proclamation recognizing Resilient and Thriving Communities Week, which is April 29th through May 6th, 2023. And this is the second year that we have done this for the organization. And this proclamation reads, "Whereas resilient and thriving communities are vital to our community and state's future health, success, and prosperity, to ensure a strong foundation for everyone at all ages and stages of life. And whereas the science is clear that resilience is built and that communities and systems play a key role in promoting safe, secure nurturing environments for all. And whereas adverse childhood and life experiences, adverse community environments, and adverse climate events impact overall quality of life and well-being of an entire community. And whereas Healthy North Carolina 2030, a path toward health by North Carolina Institute of Medicine, in partnership with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Public Health identifies reduction of adverse childhood experiences by 25% by 2030 as a goal." Welcome. And whereas it is our collective responsibility to collaborate in a nonpartisan fashion to promote positive experiences, secure relationships, and supportive environments to buffer stress and adversity, and to support local resilience coalitions, collaboratives, task forces, and initiatives across the state. And whereas investing in policies, programs, and strategies that address adversity and strengthen community resilience is essential to the health of our community. And whereas Pitt County encourages all individuals and all sectors, public and private, early childhood through post-secondary education, faith-based organizations, healthcare systems, justice systems, social service systems, businesses, and elected leaders to collaborate to strengthen our communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 29th through May 6th as Resilient and Thriving Communities Week in our community and commend its observance to all citizens, adopted this the first day of May 2023, signed by Chairwoman Mary Perkins-Williams and attested by Jana Singleton, Deputy Clerk to the Board."
And we have a late comer. Please introduce yourself if you're special.
Yeah. My name is Betul Kuchkar Dalijan Saver. I contributed.
Excellent. And Angela Lamson is also on the list if you'll come forward.
So let's tighten up a little bit. Can you get us all in?
We've got one more.
You want to get in?
Angela Lamson with East Carolina University. We'll get a picture. Oh, wait. We have to have you.
Does it work? Or should we shift? You can go in the middle.
Okay. Thank you all for the work that you do in our community. Yes. We appreciate it.
Oh, yeah. It's good to see you. Thank you all for all the good you did.
That concludes our presentation this evening, and we'll now shift in public information. We'll proceed with the tarpit or ticket item, which is next on the agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Dimmery.
I'm going to have to ask Dawn to help me. I don't want to mess your spreadsheet. While she comes before the video, I would like to say that this is our third section of our litter campaign, tarpit or ticket. We're going to spend some time out giving some tarps that we purchased. We'll be handing out tarps, going to the convenience sites, surprisingly different ones, not going to tell people where we are, so we can get tarps out. What we're looking for, we're actually looking for more of an educational, don't want to really give out fines if we don't have to. We'd rather encourage folks to cover their loads. I've mentioned this before, we have seen a difference in the ones coming to the transfer station. I have. And I will stop and comment and thank somebody when I pull in or leaving and I see that they properly tarp their loads. So this, and what we'll do is just try to educate, and we have a video, and if Dawn could start that video.
Pitt County, we've got a problem. Littering and illegal trash dumping impact the health and safety of our families. Illegal dumping is wrong, and unintentional littering is still littering. Tarpit or ticket enforcement begins July 1st. When transporting trash, secure your load properly or get a ticket. Face illegal dumping fines up to $2,000. Tarpit or ticket. Learn more at pittcountync.gov/litterfree.
And that's, that will start, that will go on the local media, and I do want to give a shout out to our PIO office. Dawn and her staff has been really, really helpful with me. I couldn't have done this. I don't have the expertise to do this, so she did a really good job. And I'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do to make our county look so wonderful.
Thank you.
We ready for the next item?
May I proceed, Madam Chairwoman?
Yes, ma'am. Please do.
All right. We are at the point of your agenda and in the course of your fiscal year, where I have the pleasure to present to you a recommended fiscal year budget for 2023-24. So I'll do that down here. Each of you should have a copy of the PowerPoint in your notebooks that you'll have with you to guide you through this week's budget workshop activities over the next three days. Any questions before we begin? Okay. And can you all see this on your screen? All right. So budget preparation this year was guided by six objectives at the start of the process. We, as a budget team, recognized that we needed to fund in accordance with the board's priorities, maintain the current tax rate, allow for efficient fee changes, invest in our employees, respect the budget drivers, and end up with a balanced budget while living within our means. As we worked through these objectives as a budget team, a common theme came to be, and that theme for this year's budget is really alignment. So what do I mean by alignment? By alignment, we realized that these objectives, when applied to your financials, allow us to align available funds to board priorities, allow us to align revenues to historical trends, allow us to align expenses to inflation, and align salaries to benefits and market. So that's really the theme of what you'll see weave throughout this year's budget presentation. As you know, the board reaffirmed its priorities at the Capital Improvement, Capital Improvement Plan Workshop in January. So as we talk about priorities, education, you'll see on your pyramid that you've seen many times before and again affirmed in January, that your top priority for Pitt County funding is education, followed by public safety, economic development, and human services. Then facility and space needs, infrastructure, and recreation. These priorities support Pitt County's mission to enhance the health, safety, and well-being of our community by advocating for and providing quality services in a friendly and cost-effective manner. That's our mission. We strive to reach our vision of being a leader in the state and best in the east, and we do this through a commitment to the values that this board has adopted, which requires us to encourage honesty and behavior that is consistent with this mission. It requires us to recognize and promote competence, excellence, and open communication, support each other in working towards our goals, maintain an open government that's a good steward of public resources, and support decision-making that's deliberate, conscientious, and based on fact. That's not something that we just made up today. That's the mission, vision, and directives that county staff is charged to follow as approved by this board in January. And that's what this budget process involved and hopes to include this evening. So these directors of the board are included within this proposed budget, which I believe does just that. So what are the drivers impacting this budget? If those are our objectives and that's our theme, this budget is impacted by factors that are not unique to Pitt County, North Carolina. One of the first factors is inflation. It simply costs more for us to do the same thing that we've always done. In a, we also are addressing a national labor shortage. So in a world where baby boomers are retiring, people have reevaluated priorities post-pandemic, and especially their relationship to the workforce, and then we have Gen Z looking for more immediate gratification in their employment through dollars and flexibility. We have to adapt in order to have people in place to provide the services that we are mandated to provide to our community. Over the last year, Pitt County's vacancy rate has ranged from a high of 15.4%, with 166 vacant positions, to a low of just 12.2%, which is about 131 positions. This month that we're currently sit, well, actually, ending April, we had 159 vacant positions within the just roughly over 1,000 positions within Pitt County Government. We have to remain competitive to have the human capital that we know is necessary to carry out our mandatory government services. You'll hear from public health later this week during your budget workshops on the challenge of operating a personal public health clinic when 14 out of 23 nursing positions are vacant. Pitt County continues to see increased demands for services and facilities, and the technology that's necessary to carry out the functions that we're doing remains costly. So those are sort of the budget drivers and impactors, and I say again, although they're applicable to Pitt County, they are not unique to just Pitt County Government. So with all of that taken into consideration and within your available revenues, tonight I'm able to present to you a balanced budget for all funds that balances revenues and expenditures at $367,71,753. And you might recall that last year there were some accounting changes that makes that number seem higher than what your typical budget is, and that's because it has to include all pass-through funds, including all municipal taxes. So that's not a number that we have available to spend. It reflects all dollars that are passing through that are audited. The number that's more familiar to you is the general fund portion of the budget. Those are the true county dollars, and what I'm presenting to you tonight in the general fund balance is at a little over $221 million. The balanced budget that I'm recommending does not require an ad valorem tax increase. It holds the rate constant at 68.41 cents. I know that's important to many people on this board and within the community, so in order to do that, the finance and budget team and I have sharpened our pencils to allocate funds within our means. We're fortunate to see continued healthy growth in Pitt County and revenue projections for the va- for the value of the tax base reflect natural growth of about 5.5%. This is a non-reappraisal year. Remember, Pitt County reappraises its property every four years, so this is not the year that property values are adjusted to market. But given market trends, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to recommend next year a property tax decrease to bring in a comparable amount of revenue, given the anticipated increases in home market values in 2024 over 2020. The North Carolina Department of Revenue recently released sales ratios for each county, and I'm not sure how familiar you are with sales ratios, but Pitt County's sales ratio is 69.62. What that means is that our current property tax values are on average about 30% below market, right? We're at about 69.62 of current market. So based on that, next year being a reappraisal year, we'll address that delta and expect to see home values closer to market, which will give this board an opportunity to bring in the same amount or a comparable amount of revenue with a lower tax rate. But this is not that year. This is the hold constant year as the third of four in the reappraisal cycle. So this tax base for fiscal year 23-24 reflects new properties and natural growth that's consistent with historical trends utilized in our revenue forecasting. So how do all the revenues break down? You've got a chart on this slide that shows the breakdown. We'll dig deeper into each of these during budget workshops the remainder of this week to the extent and in the areas that you would like, but this shows the breakdown between ad valorem taxes, other taxes, which includes sales tax and other restricted taxes, intergovernmental funds, permits and fees, sales, interest earnings, miscellaneous, and appropriated fund balance, which includes county fund balance. It also includes other fund balances, and we can drill down deeper into fund balance performance this week. Those revenues are balanced by expenditures that are broken down as shown on this slide, consistent with your adopted priorities. You know, I've heard people say, "Don't tell me where your priorities are. Show me where you spend your money, and I'll tell you what your priorities are," right? And so by looking at the amounts of your expenditures, they align, consistent with our theme of alignment, with the order of your adopted priorities. So you can see that the biggest piece of your pie is education as your number one priority. The second biggest piece of your pie is public safety as your second priority, followed closely by human services. And economic development now is encompassed within general government, so it's slightly below what I call those big three, but those are the biggest pieces of the pie, and this recommended budget allocates your available funds within your means to those top three priorities and then further down. So how did we get to this? In other words, what does this budget include? What does it not include? In order to balance this budget within available revenues, we cut almost $16 million, $15,591,508 in requested new money from the general fund, right? So we had, the way the process works, and you all know this, all the departments that we fund submit budgets to us, and then that adds up to a total. We compare that to the available revenues. If all existing revenues were the same, right? One option is to raise your tax rate to match the request. The other option is to reduce your expenditures to match your available revenues. So we didn't consider a tax rate adjustment this year. We sharpened our pencil on the expenditures. So in order to sharpen our pencil based on the requests, which came in at $231 million, noting that last year's adopted budget was $205 million, you had $26 million in new money requests this year from county departments. In sharpening our pencil, we reduced those requests about $15 million down to $10,418,583 to come up with your recommended balanced budget at $221 million, which is covered by your natural growth in the base. What I have, and to just talk a little bit about those cuts, these were hard cuts to make. None of these cuts were taken lightly. We didn't receive any requests from any department that was unreasonable or that wasn't a legitimate need or that somebody might consider fluff. There wasn't any of that. Real needs make for difficult decisions when you have to cut. So what I've cut and presented to you this evening is based upon my conversations with each department head. We spent a week meeting with every department head and office head in the county to discuss their budget. We studied historical spending trends, right? We looked back years before the pandemic, during the pandemic, and last year to see with the money allocated, how was it spent? We looked at available funds. We looked at timing. We based it upon my experience and observations over the last two years. We listened to the workforce, and the objective was to stay within those guiding principles in available revenues. So those were the factors that I used to cut out almost $16 million from this budget so that it would balance. Ultimately, it's your budget. This is my proposal, which is a recommendation to you, and during the course of our budget workshops, we can dive deeper into what these cuts came from and what they look like and what your options or alternatives may be, but this to me is a reflection of what I've just discussed and balances. I'm going to shift to what this budget now includes. Our, and it includes an investment in our employees. Our employees are our greatest asset. We are public servants, and without our employees, we can't serve. Pitt County is a team. We're made up of 26 departments, about 1,000 employees, and it takes each one of us to make Pitt County successful. And I know when I talk to the workforce and even some of you, I sound like a broken record, but I say it over and over again, there is no position in Pitt County government that is more or less important than any other position in Pitt County government. We all have a critical role to play to keep the wheels turning. So this budget does not single out a particular department, group, or shift. It recognizes and rewards every position to align it with market. Every position in Pitt County government is impacted by inflation, which is reflected in the January 1 CPI for this year of 6.9%. That means all of us, employees and otherwise, are impacted to about the tune of 6.9% impact of inflation as reflected in the January 1 CPI. This costs, so that's part of the reasoning behind this 6% cost of living across the board to help to absorb that impact of inflationary effects. And we're not adding it on the, I've been an employee here a long time before I was your manager presenting the budget, right? And so we're not adding it on the front end and then taking it out on the back end with health insurance premium increases or other things that may burden employees. This is a true 6% cost of living adjustment across the board. It's generous. Our workforce deserves it. It's above the amount that the sheriff asked when she asked for 5% for her staff. It's a percent above that. It will adjust salaries to absorb the 6.9% inflationary impacts reflected in CPI and will bring our salaries closer to market to remain competitive in this workforce that's experiencing the national labor shortage. It's equitable. It recognizes the value of every single position. It will help retain existing employees. It will help us attract new ones, and you can afford it within your available revenues. As manager, I believe it's the right thing to do for our dedicated workforce. I recommend that we continue to recognize meritorious performance, which is merit raises annually at 2.4% or 1.2%, and that we comply with, we have to, the mandatory retirement contribution increases that benefit employees who retire with service in Pitt County government. I'm not recommending any premium increase on health insurance, and I'm asking for additional flexibility with our dental and vision reimbursement program. To talk a little bit about that, our employee medical fund, this year we're asking to remain constant again for the second year in a row with no premium changes, no coverage changes. We're adding an additional, and to increase flexibility. So we'd like to increase the flexibility in our options for employees' participation fee. What that means is all employees are afforded an opportunity to participate in voluntary wellness programs as part of their employment with Pitt County government, and the extent to which you participate in those voluntary programs will allow you to earn a discount against your participation fee in the health insurance program. So every employee has a little more skin in the game, and we've added an additional tier, so it's not an all or nothing. You can do some participation, get a smaller discount, more participation, and get a larger discount. We're keeping the coverage tiers the same as last year, and you may recall, last year we added a new tier for employee plus children, that $490 per month option, which allows a single parent or someone whose spouse is insured by another employer not to have to purchase the $710 per month family coverage, but to help out at a lesser rate if it's just a parent with more than one child. And then finally, we're asking for flexibility on the dental vision reimbursement program. You may recall that each employee is entitled to receive $650 in dental and vision reimbursement, and currently we cap that so that you can only spend a certain amount of dollars on dental and a certain on vision. So if you go and have dental work that costs $650, you can't get all of that, or vision work, or a pair of glasses or contact lenses that might cost you $500, your benefit within that 650 is limited. I'm proposing in this budget by way of policy that we eliminate those artificial limits on how much you can spend. If each person gets a $650 benefit, let them spend it for anything dental or vision. So no changes in premium, no changes in coverage, and added flexibility for our employees so that they can figure out what works best for them to make ends meet in these difficult economic times. In this budget, there were 10 and 1/2 new county government positions requested. Based upon my conversations with the departments, I'm recommending that we fund 5 and 1/2 of them, as shown here. What's not funded, you each have a notebook that will guide us through the remainder of this week. On page 20 in your budget notebook, and you don't have to switch to it now, you'll see each of the positions that were requested and what was not requested. So I'm recommending that we fund the 5 and 1/2 positions shown on this screen, which would be a halftime shelter attendant for animal services, a full-time EMS community paramedic for that award-winning program, which would be covered by the EMS fund, a building inspector 2 given demands, a planner 1 given demands, a digital marketing specialist, if you can't help but see the incredible work that's coming out of our public information office, and how that contributes to the transparency and the goals that we talked about in the very beginning, and then a personal property appraiser to assist with those needs as they're understaffed in that area within tax administration. So what's not funded? Not funded is an additional office assistant in animal services, a telecommunicator in emergency management, an EMS operations chief, and two crime scene technicians within the sheriff's office. And for each of those not funded positions, I'm happy to take a deeper dive into those during workshops this week so you can better understand my thinking on what was funded and what wasn't and why. So let's shift to your number one priority, schools. I met with Dr. Linger and his team at least twice, and here's where we landed, because it's all about collaboration, right? The schools operate the schools, and we fund certain of their needs, and that requires effective, open, transparent collaboration. So this is where we landed on schools. Dr. Linger and his team originally requested $6.5 million in new money, a 13-point, almost 14% increase year over year. And you remember, when you increase the schools, that sets the new base for the following year. So we looked really hard at each one of those numbers, turned over every rock behind each number, and I'm recommending that we fund a little less than half of that. I'm recommending that we fund for education all of their fixed salary increases because those are unavoidable. I'm recommending that we continue to honor our plan to stair-step teacher supplements and add another half percent, like we said we were going to do, bringing teacher supplements to 7.5% next year, and that we fully fund additional funds that are necessary to maintain school nurses and nothing else other than their base. That brings, if you, and if you'll, see on your PowerPoint, it says on that asterisk on the bottom, 100% of fixed salary increases requested teacher supplements and additional funding for school nurses. So what doesn't that fund? It doesn't fund additional fixed facility or capital needs of things that the school has planned. It doesn't fund requested positions for social workers and counselors. It doesn't fund additional dollars for capital outlay for fixed facility needs. But those unmet needs in my discussions, I believe, might be accommodated from either state funds, remaining ESER funds, those are the ARPA funds for schools that still have some amount remaining, or Pitt County Schools' fund balance, which sits at about $10 million. You'll hear that in their presentation, about $3.5 million of which is unrestricted. You'll recall last year, the school was satisfied with our recommendation to reduce their budget, and we didn't fund some of their additional capital projects last year because they had such a high fund balance, and they utilized that. They did exactly as we would have wanted them to, to draw that down, because how does the school get fund balance? The school doesn't get fund balance from unspent state funds. The school's fund balance accumulates from county dollars that are given and not spent in a given year, and so they fall back. So the school does need some degree of fund balance, but they don't need a huge one. Dr. Linger has been very transparent in recognizing and being cooperative in utilizing those funds last year, and I think some of the items, because again, nothing in here wasn't necessary. I think he has other avenues from which to fund those items this year, including that fund balance, to be able to reduce the request and still fund the things that can't be avoided and that this board has indicated, at least in the past, remains a priority, and you can consider, continue to consider those. Dr. Linger will present to you on Wednesday. I believe that he's satisfied with this funding proposal because it accomplishes a lot, and it takes education above the $50 million mark for K-12, right? If you look at those numbers. So how you spend your numbers, how you spend your dollars reflects your priorities. They also asked for, and I'll just mention this, in their budget, 12 weapon detectors for Pitt County Schools, a new type of technology, given the demands that are on school personnel now to keep students safe. Those 12 weapon detectors were $440,000. Rather than find a place for them in next year's budget, they had unspent funds within security funds in the current year, and so we've accelerated that request. I've given Dr. Linger the AOK to go ahead and order them. If they don't come in before the end of the fiscal year, those funds can roll forward. But some of what you may see in his presentation or requests were accommodating elsewhere. But I think the biggies are the fixed salary increases, the teacher supplements, and school This is what the chart looks like from a historical commitment to education in Pitt County. So, and if I stand before you today and take off my manager hat for a quick second and put on my taxpayer parent hat, I would be really pleased with this budget. So I'm proud to present this one to you, and I'll put my manager hat back on. And we'll go to Pitt Community College. Similar outcome for Pitt Community College. Their recommended budget meets their entire request with the exception of an additional police officer that they asked for, and that's why you'll see a small cut in their funding. Why did I take that out? I would really like to see further discussion between Pitt Community College and Pitt County Schools before funding this request because it's a Pitt Community College officer for the early college high school that's on campus. And I feel like, as generous as we have been as a board in funding school resource officers for K-12, that there needs to be a little more collaboration between Community College and Pitt County Schools before we just fund that. And so that's what you'll see reflected in the cuts on Pitt Community College. But our partnership with Pitt Community College remains strong and may be the strongest it's ever been because this budget recognizes in the capital improvement part... it's ever been, because this budget recognizes, in the capital improvement part, funding for the welding building. It recognizes funding through opioid dollars to their reentry program. It recognizes funding through economic development to continue the Bulldog Promise Program that fully funds students' time at Pitt Community College for those who are eligible. And so that partnership remains strong. You'll hear from Dr. Rouse and his team this week as well. I believe you will hear about the officer position, but I think that overall, they're satisfied with this recommended budget. And here's your history for Pitt Community College funding, on the same trajectory as Pitt County Schools and consistent with your priorities. Snapshot of education, in how that looks as your top priority, if you add it all together, it's a 5.03% increase year over year. Let's move to your number two priority, public safety. I'm recommending a 6.2% increase for the sheriff's office. That's a significant increase. 4.46% for EMS, which results in a 4.7% increase overall, right? And when we look at the stair-step of priorities, your education was at 5.3, number one, your public safety is at 4.7, number two. So your dollars follow those priorities. You can see how the numbers break down on page 11 of your notebook, and we'll go through that in more detail tomorrow. But this budget recommends over $2 million in new money for the Pitt County Sheriff's Office to cover her operations, in addition to capital needs that are covered in the CIP. That's over $42 million allocated to run the sheriff's office, a huge piece of your pie. And that includes the 6% across-the-board salary increase. So what doesn't it include? It doesn't include differential pay. And this board talked about differential pay the end of last year, and there was a recommendation from staff to do, to bring back a proposal to fund a $1 per hour differential pay. And this board hasn't had further conversation about it. The sheriff did share with me that a dollar an hour was insufficient to designate permanent night shifts in the detention center, and so we pulled back at that time. What I'm proposing is that we do not fund differential pay at this time, but that we give an across-the-board 6% salary increase to everyone in the county to attract and retain the best and brightest law enforcement officers in Pitt County. That's a more significant and equitable increase for the officers and their staff, in my opinion. So that's what we've got for public safety. She also recommended two civilian crime scene investigators. We can talk about that more during the week. I didn't fund those, in part, because they are, would be difficult positions to fill based on my understanding of my conversations in our budget meeting, because the salary for those positions are fairly low. The sheriff also continues to hover around 55 vacant positions at any given time, the largest chunk of vacant positions within our county offices and agencies. And so I'm not recommending adding two new positions at this time as a way to sharpen our pencil. I'm not saying those positions aren't needed, and I'm not saying they wouldn't add value to the operation. But I am saying that if this board wants to maintain one more year without a tax rate adjustment, then we have to sharpen our pencil, and that's probably, in my opinion, one of the less painful places to do it. Shift to human services. You'll hear presentations on Thursday for a deeper dive into these numbers on public health and social services. You'll hear from Teresa Ellen, our interim public health director, and you'll hear from Sharon Rochelle, who's our social services director, who is managing beautifully with an interim finance officer and pulled numbers together in a very complex budget with very significant staffing challenges. So you'll hear from both of them later this week about human services, and you can see the relative increases in those budgets going forward, and we'll talk more about those during the week. Nothing particularly controversial in any of those budgets. It's a matter of aligning the funds in with the funds out and being sure they have the needs for both. Neither public health nor social services asked for additional positions this year. They're being very, very careful stewards of their county dollars, shared with federal and state dollars, to run their operations. And I couldn't be more pleased with the challenges that they are overcoming to get the services out to the community in a very cost-effective way, very consistent with our mission. Let's talk for a second about EMS. To look a little bit closer at EMS, that was a component of your public safety budget. The EMS fund continues to live within its means. Now, I've said that before, but living within our means is one of those beginning objectives at this budget, with no increase to its tax rate. That remains at 5.95 cents. Available revenues do support an additional community paramedic. And for those of you who know, our community paramedic program is having a tremendous impact on the community. It was seeded with funds from the Vidant Foundation to go out to homes, to address those who were coming to the emergency room very frequently and not an effective or efficient way to manage their conditions. And this program has a long waitlist, and we're recommending that you add the additional community paramedic position to support that program within your existing available revenues. It continues the capital replacement plan, and this budget is recommended by the EMS Oversight Committee. Fire. There, of your 20 fire departments, everything is being held constant at their request with the exception of three. Grimes, Lynn, Simpson, and Statenhouse have requested rate increases. You'll hear more about that from Randy Gentry, about what's driving those increases, but the recommended budget honors those requests for rate increases from those three departments. A little bit about CIP. In January, you approved a capital improvement plan. I'm going to run through fairly quickly the projects that you recommended in January and are included within our means within this budget. So these next few slides just remind you what you approved in January and confirm that we've included in this budget. From general government, we continue to fund an annual vehicle replacement plan at $665,000 per year, and that C means cash funded. It means we're not borrowing money, we're not taking it from anywhere else. We have available funds within existing revenues to pay for it. Facility capital maintenance at $250,000, security improvements at $100,000, and we are in dire need, after a study last year, to replace some broadcast equipment for the county commissioners, this auditorium. And those numbers are going to come in at about $200,000. That's critical to maintaining transparency with your constituents, and so I'm recommending that we fund that in full this year. On this list as well is a Pitt County courthouse lighting project. For the last several years, you've heard from Holly Garriot, or may have heard about a lighting project that she's working on throughout Pitt County from a placemaking perspective. Because this expenditure is recommended to be included in your capital improvement plan this year, I have Holly Garriot coming to talk to you this week about what that involves and what it would look like and the impact that it will make on the community. That's money that you can keep in there, or if you need to shift things around, that's available for you to do that. But it is currently included in our recommended budget and within your available revenues for general government. Public safety, we have $100,000 carried forward for EMS capital replacements. We have $120,000 for detention center facility improvements, and we have money, cash-funded money, to replace the boilers at the detention center that are needing to be replaced. For education, you carry forward. I did not add any of their additional requests, but you have consistently given $1 million in capital to K-12 schools, $100,000 in capital to Community College, and those have carried forward and are included within the budget. And then for environmental protection, and this is both soil and water and solid waste. We talked two years ago, I want to say, where we're including $100,000 a year to contribute towards critical waterway snagging. Those funds supplement a grant-funded position and grant funding that helps clear the waterways and enhance drainage, and you've seen us use that with our community and municipal partners as well. We had some incredible projects in Winterville where we snagged some creeks and all throughout the county, all parts of the county, to keep the waterways flowing the way they are intended. Within solid waste, we've set aside in that enterprise fund. So remember, solid waste runs like a business. The rest of county government doesn't. But solid waste runs like a business. The revenues it receives cover its costs, and it has to match. So they need some additional equipment, including a roll-off truck, a tractor-trailer, a yard jockey, and they need to make some repairs to the transfer station and some asphalt, concrete, and building repairs, including some at the convenience sites. And then finally, cultural and recreational, we've set aside $250,000, which was a carry-forward that we talked about in prior years, to cover the architect and other fees associated with your recreation centers. The rescue plan funds that you've set aside for that purpose is just for the building construction. So this carries forward to cover the design and the other services. That's $19,928,000 for fiscal year '23-'24. You think, gosh, that's a huge number. How did that happen? $15 million of it, I said 19,000, I meant 19 million, $15 million of it is the Pitt Community College welding building. And that's not actual money yet. When they're ready, we are projecting, because this board committed to fund that building, that we'll take a bank loan, and debt service would come out of restricted education funds, right? Article, sales tax restricted for education. And so 15 of that 19 is on your books for the welding building as that project progresses. The remainder are the projects that we just talked about. All of those were discussed in January of this year. Human services projects, there was some money in your workshops in January that talked about planning and funding for a new human services building. We've deferred that a year. You may hear from Ms. Rochelle in her presentation about some other ideas she has that might be able to save you some money in that regard. Affiliates and nonprofits. We are, cannot do what we do without our community partners. These partners are critical in our service delivery. Funding for each is reflected on the chart that's in front of you. It's also in your notebook. I know the numbers are small. I'm recommending continued funding at the same levels we did last year for most of these recipients. Continued funding for Shepherd Memorial Library. It will look as if there's a small reduction from last year's budget to the recommended budget. That's because last year included one-time funding for a specific project that was finished. And so this funds their request at a lower amount than the prior year. There's a slight increase in council on aging funding. The last three years, they've requested an increase to meet inflationary costs and continue to support the long list, waitlist they have for their Meals on Wheels program. We did not grant them an increase last year or the year before, so I'm recommending that we do a slight increase for council on aging this year from $250,200 up to $268,000 to accommodate some of their deferred needs. We'll maintain economic stimulus program at the airport, continue funding for our economic development partner, the ENC Alliance, from economic development funds in return for continued partnership in marketing and lead generation. I believe that funding to the Greenville ENC Alliance is a reflection of a true example of maximizing success through collaboration and mutual respect of each other's roles. And I think it's working beautifully. I think in closed session tonight, you'll hear about a series of projects, and you'll see that things are moving in the right direction with economic development. This budget includes from economic development funds a continued payment, annual payment to the Greenville ENC Alliance for that purpose. For the nonprofits listed, funding remains fairly constant, as is shown on the chart, with a slight increase in Pitt County Arts Council. So you'll hear from Holly again this week with the Arts Council on Thursday. She's coming, and she utilized, and she'll talk about the funds that she's utilized, post-pandemic recovery funds to help rebuild some of the smaller arts groups throughout the county. Now that those funds are done, a very minimal increase will help continue those efforts and continue the legacy that those funds made in some of the smaller arts groups. And Holly will be able to talk to you about that in greater detail later this week. So that's the recommended funding for affiliate nonprofit sustaining agencies. Let's talk a little bit about fee changes. Every year, I think it would be irresponsible not to review the fees that the county charges and that you include in your fee manual. And in a theme of alignment, this budget recommends fee changes this year in four categories that will align them with actual costs. So I'm recommending four categories of fee changes. The first is for EMS transport fees. We review those annually from the source on your screen to be consistent with Medicare rates. And so we're recommending that our fee manual adjust to those reimbursable rates, and we do that typically as a matter of course. Animal Services has seen increased costs in their ability to operate, and they have requested, in four areas, very modest fee increases to help cover those costs. It would be a $10 increase in dog adoptions, driven primarily by the increase in cost of veterinarian services and the spay neuter that's required for, during adoption. Same for cats, an updated owner surrender fee of $10. And then we have been charging a rabies vaccine fee, but realized it was not included within your fee manual when you go out into the community and do those rabies vaccine clinics. And so this captures that. We had been charging in the past, it raises that fee $15 to cover the cost of the rabies vaccine itself. So all of these animal services fees are to reflect the true cost of the service. Farmer's market fee changes. When we say fee changes, these are really a, could result in a reduction in fees and are really for ease in administration. Last year, Assistant Manager James Rhodes kind of took on an overseeing supervisory role for the farmer's market. And based upon his observations over the last year, he had some recommendations, many of which have already been put into place, but this was one of them that I agree with and I think is a good idea from a financial integrity perspective. Currently, to have a booth at the farmer's market, you pay $50 at the beginning of the year, and then you pay $5 in cash every Saturday, 52 Saturdays a year. And there's cash handling going on. And so to eliminate weekly cash handling and enhance financial integrity, right? To not have so much cash in little envelopes going back and forth on a Saturday that have to be accounted for, we're shifting it to an upfront payment that will cover the whole year. So if you take your $50, and your $5 times 52 Saturdays, this annual fee has a reduction. And if you're not wanting to come all 52 Saturdays because you're a peak season vendor, there's a discounted peak season vendor fee, which reflects a fewer number of weeks that you would have to be there. And then if you're a one-timer or you have a special event, there's a one-time $25 fee. But we think it's better for financial practices and financial integrity to eliminate that much cash handling each week and to get that fee upfront for your booth. And to do so, there's a little incentive in there, so it'll save you, save our vendors just a few dollars. And then lastly, John Demery will talk to you much more in depth this week during workshops. He's recommending that we increase our solid waste fee by a dollar per month per household to cover some of the additional costs associated with the operation of that enterprise fund and recycling. So we're almost to the end. This has been a lot. But a summary of what this budget does and what this budget does not do. What this budget does, there's no increase in ad valorem tax rate. There's no increase in EMS tax rate. It honors the request to increase three fire district tax rate. It invests in our employees in the way that we've discussed. It adds 5.5 critical positions to your headcount. It allocates your funds in order of the board's adopted priorities. It makes minor fee adjustments, and it provides new funding. And you'll see when we look at these numbers and within your notebook, included within your budget, should you choose to spend it that way, is funding for a pretrial services program. In your weekly information packet last week, you received the study report that this board paid for last year to make recommendations for pretrial services. That report recommends that this board create a committee to review pretrial service options and implement pretrial services for Pitt County, like many other counties like us have done. The fully loaded cost for a pretrial services program is probably going to be about $300,000, depending on what this committee decides ought to be included within it. So given the fact that a committee needs to be formed and recommendations need to be made, this budget includes- needs to be formed and recommendations need to be made, this budget includes $150,000 for pretrial services program, should it develop to that point. If it doesn't, that money falls back to your fund balance. But I wanted it in there, so as this conversation continues to progress, if this board gives the green light from a recommendation from a committee, if you choose to appoint one, funds would be available. It also includes the additional funds we talked about for the arts, which is the courthouse lighting project and the minimal increase for the Pitt County Arts Council. It includes the funding for economic development, and it also includes furniture, overdue furniture for the clerk of court, less than $20,000, but new money nonetheless. What it does not include is 16 million, almost 16 million, $15 and a half million in cuts of new money requests that, based on my conversations and observations and experience, believe that we can live without for another year. It cuts five requested positions. We've talked about those. It does not include differential pay, but it does include the 6% adjustment across the board. And it does not fully align all needed fee increases. We'll talk about this for just one second. In our review of fee increases, there are certain planning fees and certain inspection fees that, upon initial review, are likely to need adjustment, that they are not so much in line with our comparable counties or municipal jurisdictions for inspection fees, for example, and are not likely capturing the true cost to provide that service. But before I present them to you, I want to make sure that we have thoroughly evaluated it. And so this budget does not fully align all needed fee increases. There will be more to come, but I don't want to present it to you yet until we've done our homework, included those who it's affecting, and roll it out in a way that's thorough and fair. But I don't want to leave you thinking that all the other fees in your fee manual are on target. They're not. But there's more work that needs to be done to get them to the right level. So stay tuned for that. Tie it back to your theme, what I believe you've just heard aligns your available funds to your board priorities. I believe it aligns your revenues to historical trends. I believe it aligns your expenses to inflation. I believe it aligns your salaries and benefits to market so that we can remain competitive. So where do we go from here? You have budget workshops Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday this week, slated 8:30 to noon, but I don't think you'll be here that long. I think we can get done what we need to get done in less than a couple of hours, because we'll be real purposeful about your presentations. We'll have time in the beginning and time at the end to discuss. Yeah, so if we start at 8:30, I'm hoping you'll be out before 10:00, 10:30. We had set aside a second week for additional budget workshops. I don't believe you'll need them, but if you do, we can arrange them. But I don't think that you will. June 6th is your public hearing for citizen input and possible adoption, and June 26th is your backup date for adoption if you don't adopt following your public hearing. And then I can't end without special thanks, right? So the last year in Pitt County government, we've spent a lot of time as employees, as a workforce, talking about creating a culture of kindness. We spend a lot of time here, and it's important to be kind to one another, just to acknowledge one another with grace and be supportive. It's all part of those values and goals. And woven within that is a sense of gratitude, right, so that all county employees, we hope, come to work with a sense of gratitude and a sense of camaraderie, connected by our shared mission and vision as we serve the citizens of Pitt County. So in the spirit of that gratitude, I would be remiss if I didn't thank all of our county department heads and staff for their contribution and input to this budget, all of our community partners who spent countless hours, some over multiple days, running through these numbers with me so that we could have a comfort level, and then especially our county finance budget team. And I'd love for them to stand. Sam Kroom, you know, is your chief financial officer, and this is his first budget prepared for Pitt County government. Kelly Dixon, if she will stand, is no longer within the budget division, but has been outrageously instrumental based on her prior experience in keeping us on track in the development and formulation of this budget in an amazing way. Devin Johnson is our new budget analyst, who took Kelly's position in budget. Susan Stokes is our new budget administrator. Pam Wertham is not with us today, but she helped us with Munis, which is our software program entry, given staffing shortages, which was tremendously helpful. So this team worked tremendously hard, and their work is what's reflected in this budget before you today that honestly, I'll tell you, I feel really, really good about. So I'm happy to answer any general questions that you might have this evening. Look forward to getting into the deeper dive Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday with you. But with that, is there anything, any comments or anything I can answer this evening?
Board members, you want to wait till the budget day, or do you want to snap at it right now?
I'll just, I'll just say you did an excellent job of overview of what to expect tomorrow.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank, thank you, Janice, for a job well done. Certainly, the citizens of Pitt County appreciate that not having a tax increase. So I want to commend you on that.
I like alignment. Anybody, anyone else on this side, on this end? All right, Madam, Manager, you can come back to the podium and join us while we move forward. Job well done, very pleasantly given. I think we are on page 13.
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Perkins-Williams, Commissioners, and Manager Gallagher. Tonight I bring to you the March 2023 Tax Collection Report. The Pitt County Fiscal Year to Date, July 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2023, combined collection rate for real and personal property is 98.47%. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was 98.66%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available to the North Carolina General Statutes. It's my recommendation that the board approve the March 2023, 2023 Collection Report as presented.
Commissioner White motioned to approve, and it was second by Chris, no, no, no. Let's vote. Unanimous. Mr. Kroom?
Good evening. Tonight I bring you the March 2023 Finance Report for the General Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and the EMS Fund. We are nine months into the fiscal year at this point, or 75% of the year. For the General Fund, we have collected 81.8% of anticipated revenues and spent 68.3% of budgeted expenditures. For Solid Waste, we have collected 93.5% and spent 69.5%. EMS, we have collected 79.5% and spent 72.5%. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation for a motion to approve the monthly financial report as presented.
So move.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner McGlaughlin, and it was second by Commissioner Ward. Let's vote, please. County Manager.
Ready for me again?
Yes.
Your next, this will be short. Your next meeting dates are May 15th and June 5th in this auditorium. May 2nd to 4th, you'll have budget workshops beginning at 8:30 in the morning, starting tomorrow. In the evening on May 4th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., I'll drive a van for those who are signed up to attend the NCACC District Meeting in Martin County. May 23rd and 24th, for those who are signed up to attend is NCACC, that's the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, County Advocacy Days. And then on June 6th, 6:00 p.m., will be your public hearing on the budget. And then the last item is I wanted to recognize the North Carolina Department of Labor Safety Awards. The 2023 Safety Award Luncheon was held on April 20th with remarks from the Honorable Josh Dobson, North Carolina Department of Labor Commissioner. And Pitt County received eight awards in that program. Silver awards are given to entities whose rate of days away from work, so this is about workplace safety. If your rate of days away from work is at least 50% below the industry average, you get a silver award. If your gold awards are given to entities whose rates away from work and job transfers and restrictions are at least 50% below the industry average. So this year, we had silver awards granted to Pitt County Public Health, Pitt County Social Services, and Pitt County Detention Center. And we had gold awards given to Pitt County Buildings and Grounds, Emergency Management, Solid Waste, Animal Services, and Pitt County General Government. So employee safety remains a top priority for Pitt County government, and these awards are a reflection of that commitment. And on your screen, you'll see the group of us who went to the Safety Awards Luncheon the week before last and our table full of hardware.
Right. Congratulations to all of those departments.
And that's all that I have for your manager's report.
All right. We do have approval of units.
Items for consent.
Motion to approve the items for consent.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Nannely, second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, let's vote.
Items for decision.
Items for decision. Mr. Rose, it's a pleasure to have you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I won't take as long as Janice tonight, so no rezonings to contend with. But we are pleased to bring before you tonight some traffic improvements that are proposed by NC DOT. These are specifically looked at at three intersections along NC 43 South. And just to orient you a bit, again, just past, we already have a signal at Worthington and NC 43 South, right near DH Connolly High School. So just south of there, Cox Crossing, Ivy Road, NC 43 South. If you've traveled that area, you know it's kind of a strangely-aligned roadway or intersection. That one is proposed for improvement along with Chikod, that intersection right at Chikod Elementary School. And then also down at 102 and NC 43 South, also known as Calico. So let's go through each one of those real quickly. And we do have Jeremy Stroud here tonight, who's with the Division Two Engineering Office. He'll also provide some additional comments after I give a brief presentation. So here's the strangely-aligned area here at Cox Crossing, NC 43. This is not oriented north, but this is a map we were given, so we're going to work with the best we can. So Greenville is actually courting down towards the opposite direction, but here's Ivy Road. Again, not a straight intersection by any means. So there's been some study of this intersection for quite a good while, whether it should be a four-way stop, whether it should be a reduced conflict intersection. You'll hear more about that when we talk about Calico. And ultimately, DOT has determined this warrants, and you'll hear Jeremy talk about warranting, this warrants to have a signal now. So with that, you can't see all the detail on the map, but there'll be some better alignment with a signal at Cox Crossing. That is what's proposed. Further south, it's Chikod, Chikod School, Stokes Town St. John Road here. Currently, again, there's been study of this for a while, too. Currently has a flashing light, yellow light there on NC 43, red flashing light on the other direction. So now warrants a full signal at this intersection with some other type improvements at the intersection itself. So those are two with signals. Going a little bit further south, you can see not as much activity at the intersection proper here at Calico. Is an old store here on one corner, residential dwelling on the opposite. What's proposed here, and a lot of study, we've been in discussions about four-way stops and maybe some other types of alternatives. But in this case, this particular intersection, due to traffic volume and other things, does not warrant a full signal. So instead, what you'll have is a reduced conflict intersection whereby you will not have free-flowing left turns. In turn, you have to go up on NC 43, take a U-turn, go back, hang a right to go on 102. So evidence shows, per DOT, that this creates a safer intersection. But I'm not the expert here. We've got Jeremy Stroud here to kind of go through additional detail to talk about why DOT has gone with this particular recommendation. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeremy for a minute, just to provide you some insight there. Jeremy?
Thank you, Board of Commissioners. My name is Jeremy Stroud. I am the Division Two Deputy Engineer here with Division Two. So thank you for your time this evening. Just to go back a little bit on where we started and how we got here, the three intersections on 43 that we've identified are part of the Highway Safety Improvement Program. So basically over time, we evaluate, evaluate crashes as they occur, and if we determine that intersection meets certain criteria, we look into them further to how to, how do we mitigate those crashes? What things can we do to improve the safety for the traveling public? Because that is one of our core goals and values within DOT, is the safety to travel in public. So I don't, are there any questions about the two signalized intersections? I figured those were softballs. Those are easy. Everybody likes a signal. Not an issue, correct? So really, I reckon one that we're talking about is 102 and 43. And why did we come up with an RCI design versus a signal design? In order to have a signal installed, it has to meet one of eight warrants or criteria. Chikod School, if it wasn't for the school itself and the peak hour traffic that the school generates from parents dropping off and taking their kids to school, it would not have met the signal warrant. So if you look at Calico and 102, that intersection has about 2,500 cars coming in the, on the 102 approaches, and about 7,500 cars per day on the 43 approaches. So to put that in context, and how an RCI was functioning versus, I reckon the only other really viable option we see would be a, an always-stop. An always-stop would fit this intersection. An always-stop, based on our data, would work up to about 15,000 cars per day. If you've been around Greenville and some of the Frog Level Road and Thomas, I mean, there's a lot of traffic on those roads, and they function. They're crowded at times, but they function. We feel like always-stop at Calico and 102 would work, or 43 and 102 would work fine. What we do realize, though, is that because there are about three times as many vehicles on the 43 approaches as 102, an RCI would allow for that 43 traffic to flow freely. You would not have to stop at an intersection or a signal light or anything like that. In fact, the design here would allow, like I said, that traffic to flow freely. It's only the 102 approaches that would need to approach the intersection. You would only have to be aware of one direction of travel because you're not going across the intersection. So you would look one way. If it's clear, you would get in, you make your right turn, you get into the turn lane, and then at that time, your attention's only in another direction ahead of you. And then again, it's for these reasons that they're about, let me throw out my right number here, they're about 50% safer than a conventional intersection. And even a signal light is only about 25% as effective, because again, people run signal lights all the time. So that's, that's again, that's where we were. We have evaluated this, this intersection for a roundabout, for an RCI, and for the always-stop. A roundabout is about $3 million, two and a half, $3 million, based on our last projects. DOT, we don't have funding for that kind of project. It would have to go into our STI program and get scored with It would have to go into our STI program and get scored with all of the projects in the state in this area. DOT, we do have a pot of money right now that we could fund the RCI, and that's why it's being presented to the Board of Commissioners tonight. That pot of money is part of our high-impact, low-cost funds, and if we don't use those funds on a project by the end of June, we are subject to lose those funds. So that's, again, that's why we're asking for the board's support on the three intersections and to include the one at 43 and 102.
I, yes.
I just want to let you know I have several questions and comments whenever it's time.
Okay. May I make one?
Oh, absolutely.
There's a new pattern at Memorial Drive and Highway 33 West. I watched two people almost go head-on today. It's unfamiliar. You can't leave Peden and go one way, and they are doing crazy driving patterns, and it's, I'm afraid someone would get killed. And the...
Ma'am, what intersection was that again, so I can make a note of it?
Intersection at Memorial Drive and Highway 33 West.
Okay.
I mean, they're doing some crazy driving like that. Maybe some paint can tell them that a ridge is there.
Okay.
But I like to see people drive safe. Commissioner White?
Thank you.
Commissioner White has several questions for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is my district, and I live not too far down the road from this. I have, as soon as I, James was good enough to call me last week and let me know what was coming up since it was in my district, and I got on the phone and started calling a bunch of people, and I have not talked to, when I say a bunch, I mean, I don't just mean four, five, I mean, 30, 40 people. I have not talked to one person that is in agreement with it. They said it would be a huge, huge inconvenience. There's a lot of 18-wheeler tractor-trailer trucks that go through. There's a lot of big, heavy farm equipment that go through there, not just traveling up and down 43, but traveling back and forth across 102. There's a lot of people that are upset, you know, that if they're coming from the Calico side, that they can't go and turn left and go towards Vanceford. There's a lot of people upset coming from the Gardnerville-Aiden side, that if they wanted to head out to Blackjack, they can't turn left, they got to go right, and then, you know, come back. That's just really going to be a huge inconvenience. I know there's a lot of school buses out there that it would probably, I'm sure, be an inconvenience for also. And I know it's about safety, but that is not a bad intersection. The visibility is not bad at all. On either side, when you're looking back and forth, the visibility is fine. People might not look, but the visibility is fine. And I talked to somebody that is on the Gardnerville Fire Department, and he said that he did not think that there was a need for, you know, that there hadn't been what he considered a wreck that was bad enough or whatever in any time recent years to justify that, that what would really just be a huge inconvenience for anybody, for everybody. I feel like if you want to do something there, we need to look at something else. I understand that there is an issue with the money being allocated and having to be spent by a certain date. Can the money go towards something else, like potholes? I had to get my truck realigned about a month ago because of all the potholes out here. And I'm not making jokes and being funny. I mean, that is a true statement. I mean, if there's something else that we can put that money towards, I mean, even if it's not in my district, if it's somewhere else, but everybody I have talked to have said that they would rather see absolutely nothing at all there than to see that.
Okay.
People that live out there.
Right. Okay. I can try to address a couple of your comments with, I reckon, the operational issues and time. We've put these RCI designs on NC 11 from Aiden to the Lenore County line. We put them in on 264 recently from Greenville to Washington. To say there's not inconvenience at times, there is an inconvenience. Of course, it's not as simple as going across the intersection and making a turn. I'm not in the area during peak hours, but one thing that has been brought to my attention is that it may help at certain times, peak hour times. I reckon 43 is used a lot during the mornings and afternoons, beach traffic, that kind of thing potentially. It would allow you to space gaps only in one direction versus having to space them in both directions. So it may functionally be an issue at times when there's low volumes, and again, you can just right now pull up to an intersection and go, but there may be times when it may actually function better than what it does now. As far as safety and the fire department's concerns or whatnot, again, we haven't gone from point A to point B with, the first time we realized there's an accident pattern there to where we are today. We put in the signal light, we put in turn lanes, we put in islands to help line folks up with the intersection, kind of perpendicular and not at a skew and those kind of things, and we still have the data that shows that there's still an accident pattern there. So again, I'm not here to push an RCI on anybody. I'm not here, I'm saying we have funding now to implement this. If this is not the way we go, DOT is ultimately liable for the roadway, and we may have to make other enhancements that may be an always stop or something else. Because again, that would work at this location. And I don't, I don't know if the counties won't, if there's a willingness to see if you can't get it on a program to be scored and then be a roundabout or another project. Again, all those, there's three or four valuable options, viable options, just DOT determined the RCI would be the best fit particular for this intersection.
James, is there any way that we can do some, remove this item? Because I do think that the traffic lights at the other places, those are bad intersections. Is there any way that we could remove this item and have the other, you know, two items together? Remove this item and maybe do some, and I know that there's not a lot of time, but do some additional study and look at something else in place for that instead of moving forward with this tonight?
Certainly, I think Jeremy will take any support he can get for the traffic signal intersections. The other thing is, I'll just reiterate, that third one at Calico, DOT has identified this as a serious safety concern, and even if the board doesn't support this RCI, there may be improvements going in regardless. So just want to make sure everyone understands that. But yes, you can proceed forward with the resolution with those two, Chikod and Cox Crossing, and provide that for Jeremy tonight.
Okay. And could this money be put somewhere else at another location?
So yes, if the county does not support this, DOT would definitely try to put these funds elsewhere. I didn't really have a plan B because, again, we're moving in, like, middle of May, I have to have it to my board for June approval. So we will, we will try to, again, not let those funds slide. Those are capital project funds, not for maintenance. So again, they're not going to be used to fix potholes, but they will hopefully be used elsewhere. But again, I'm, I mean, we're DOT, we'll do what we can.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Christopher?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation, and I, for one, you know, appreciate the want to get ahead of future issues. I think that one of the most frustrating things that I hear from members of the community that oftentimes modifications and intersections come after the fact, after a fatal accident or numerous fatal accidents.
Right.
And I think the reality in the county is that a growing county is going to have growing pains at interchanges. And the reduced conflict intersections, the roundabouts, roundabout sounds like it's out of the picture because of budgetary concern.
Yes, sir.
I like the idea of being proactive moving forward if it's a safer plan. I think that any change is inconvenient because it's a new traffic pattern, especially if you frequent that intersection. But there, I know, I know that there are a number of people that are in areas out on 33 and some areas that were not, not heavily traveled before, where there are interchanges where you can still turn left, that folks go ahead and turn right and do a U-turn anyway because it, because it gets really, really shifty at times. So I wonder if you could drill down on that 50% safer than even the traffic light data that you brought, and what does that mean in terms of, what are you looking at when you say that? And how does that compare with some of the other, I guess, alternative modifications? Like, so outside of our traditional stop signs and signals?
So DOT, we've, we've got lots of data. We're a data-driven organization. So over time, through implementation of, and I've got four or five here I can provide you with, different modifications to what our two-way, one-stop control intersection would be, so like the three that we're talking about tonight. Again, there's a clearinghouse with all these projects, and we've, we have evaluated their success over time after implementation, and we've coming up, we have came up with these safety factors. And so the safety factors for like an always stop, for example, for all crashes from the two-way stop condition, you're looking at like 68% reduction in crashes, crashes estimated. A signal, like I said, is about 20% reduction. Many roundabout, about 20%. A full, full-size roundabout's about 50%. And an unsignalized RCI is about 42%.
So pretty, pretty good bang for the buck, is I guess, that's what I'm grabbing at. And we've got the money to do it now.
We have the money to do it now. And again, if you're talking about bang for the buck, I can put in an always stop for about $10,000 to $15,000, and I can get a reduction in crashes about 60 to 70%. So bang for your buck is the always stop, but for this condition and what we feel the traffic patterns, the RCI would give a good benefit cost.
And I was going to follow with that. So on 43, this lineup would, would, would maintain even flow, flow-through at all times.
At all times.
At all times, so that you would have not impediments to that, to that dominantly, dominantly traveled through affair. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Because we've all been to a signal light and it's still through a red light.
Well, yeah, and a four-way stop's the same deal, right? You have a dominant street and sometimes, right?
Right.
So I like, I like, you know, I'm prepared to make a motion to accept all three.
I want to know one thing about that intersection, because there are a lot of long distance trucks that uses it, and I saw him pull down to the fire station, Mr. Rose, and U-turn, stop the traffic, go back to get where he was trying to go, because the traffic pattern had changed tremendously at that intersection. And I would like you to reevaluate that, please, because I was really concerned about a serious accident, and I don't like to see those, but that was, it's a lot of trucks over our way, and that happened. And Commissioner Ward asked for something. Please look at that.
Yes, ma'am. And the bulbous here for the U-turn movements at this particular intersection are designed for the largest vehicle we would design for.
18-wheelers?
18-wheelers, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ward, oh.
Make a motion.
I saw, are you into making motion? Are you trying to make a comment, Anne?
Yes.
I like the comments. Commissioner Huggins.
I just want to say that I like that you're being proactive, because, you know, it was just on the news, I don't remember now where it was, a citizen was complaining that DOT had not done anything, you know, and there were crashes, you know, fatal ones. So I'm glad to see you being proactive, and even though, you know, some of the residents around there, you know, are not in favor of what you're doing, so, but is, you said you can make some modifications, but you will go forward with this anyway, right?
What's, can you reframe the question? I'm sorry. So...
I'm saying your decision, your study and all of this warrants your actions that you are proposing and that you're going to go forward with.
It would. This intersection and all three intersections are identified in that Highway Safety Improvement Program. And again, as part of that program, we look at different alternatives or ways to mitigate those crashes, and with the three improvements that were presented tonight with the two signals and the RCI, that's what DOT has determined would be the best fit for those intersections at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Ward?
Madam Chair, can I suggest, or at least ask the board if we can at least separate in two motions for the two traffic lights and then one motion for the RCI, if the board would so kindly grant that?
What kind of motion were you expecting to make, Commissioner Ward?
So I was going to make a motion to, I'm making a motion to approve all three proposals.
And you were going to second, so what kind of motion are you proposing?
I was, or I'll make a substitute motion. I would like to propose that we approve the two traffic lights at Cox Crossing and Chikod only.
And I'll second it.
There's, and then we can have a separate motion on the RCI.
All right. I went to Ms. Ward and Commissioner Nannely first, but we have a motion from Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner Nannely.
We take a substitute first.
Well, you have to vote on the substitute motion first. Okay, that's what you were going to say, and these are the motions that you were going to make. Did you make the motion?
We made our motion.
And then you're making yours. All right. I just want to get it straight.
So I think you have a motion by Chris Nannely, seconded by Beth Ward, to approve all three, and a substitute made by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Smith, and you vote on your substitute motion first.
Right, we most, right. That I know, I just wanted to, because I asked, what was my question to them, or anyway. We have a motion. We'll vote on the motion by Commissioner White, and the substitute motion was seconded by Commissioner Smith.
Okay. What are we, how are we voting, one, two, or what?
So if you vote, if you vote, if you press number one, that's yes to approve the two improvements. If you vote no, then you'll go to the original motion, which is to approve three improvements.
Has everyone voted?
No.
Uh, two, four. The mission, the motion passed.
It fails. It fails.
It said five.
It's four to four because Tom is missing.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
It fails.
It fails. I'm sorry.
You'll go to the original.
Now we go to the original motion, we pass all three.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Okay, you vote yes to pass the motion that Commissioner Nannely made, and you seconded.
Okay.
And then you vote two, opposite.
I didn't mean to do abstaining, I meant to do yes, I'm sorry.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
It's a thing.
That's because Commissioner Ward pressed abstaining, but she clarified that she meant to press yes.
All right.
So the screen said fail because it only...
All right, motion pass.
So the last one was four to four.
Four to three.
The last one was four to four, and this one is five to three.
Five to three.
Five to three.
Okay, next item.
Item for decision number two is an appointment to the Pitt Area Transit Board, and it is recommended that you appoint Ms. Hodges to fill the, serve the, the unexpired term of Tonica Ward.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner McLawhorn. Vote, please. Matt Clicker, okay.
The next one is, I'm sorry.
Is it pass?
Yes, ma'am. The next one is an appointment to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and it's recommended to appoint Mr. Chris Barak to the Greenville Police Chief or designate a seat for an unexpired term that expires December 31st, 2023.
Motion by Commissioner Huggins, second by Commissioner McLawhorn.
Your last appointment this evening is an appointment to the Aiden Planning Board, and it's recommended that you appoint Ms. Sarah Coltrane to the ETJ seat and Mr. Gordon Jones to the ETJ alternate seat, both with terms expiring May 1st, 2026.
Motion in.
Second it.
Motion by Commissioner Huggins, second by Commissioner Ward. Motion pass. We now are ready to go into closed session. Do we, oh, Commissioner's comment. I'm ready to go home. Commissioner's comment. Huggins?
No.
White?
I wanted to clarify, since we had to do that all in one motion, that I am for the traffic light at Cox Crossing and at Chicade intersection, but that I am not for the RCI down there at Calico and Highway 43, because I have talked to people that will be impacted by it daily. I'm not sure who else in here drives on it daily. But anyways, I do want to make that clarification, that that is why I voted no.
All right. Comment accepted. Commissioner Huggins, I mean, McLawhorn, comments? Commissioner Smith?
Same for me on Commissioner White's comments. I was in favor of the other two. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Commissioner Nonley?
No comment.
Commissioner Holloman?
No comment.
Commissioner Ward, no comment. Thank you all for your comments. Do you need a break?
No, ma'am.
Well, we will get ready for Mr. Attorney, will you take us into closed session?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. It has been suggested this board go into closed session under the following grounds. One, to discuss the location, relocation or expansion of industry under North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A4. Two, to discuss the personnel matter under North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A6. And three, to prevent the disclosure of information that is not considered a public record under North Carolina General Statute 143, 31810. And Madam Chairwoman, I would ask to be heard at the beginning of our second matter at a time that you deem appropriate.
All right. Thank you.
Do you need a motion? Anyway, I make a motion if we go into closed session.
Second.
I was waiting for it. Motion by Commissioner Ward, we go into closed session, seconded by Commissioner Nonley. Let's vote, please. We're going into closed session. Are we clear?
No.
It'll show on your screen.
Pass. Okay, welcome back. We're into open session, and we have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the closed session minutes from April 3, 2022.
Second.
They're moving to, for the closed session minutes, April 22, seconded by Commissioner McLawhorn. Let's vote. Oh, I'm the last one. Anything else to become before this board for tonight? May I have a motion?
I move for adjournment.
Move that we adjourn by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Huggins. Let's vote. I think this is going to pass unanimously. Thank you. Let's go home.